My phone ringer is off. Yep. So, we are doing things slightly differently tonight because we are doing a public hearing also on the Board of Education bond for working cash funds. So, we're going to start with that and then we will move to go back. Well, we're in open, but we're moving into a public hearing. Then we'll move out of the public hearing. Then we'll go into open session and then we'll do all the things we normally do. And then we'll do public comment about things not related to the bond. Does that make sense to everybody?
Does that mean the pledge will be after, like, the land acknowledgement and all that, after the board?
All the, yes.
After the public hearing?
Yes. Yes. So, I'm going to read from my handy dandy script provided by Karen. I need to what? I need a roll call. Thank you, America. Roll call, please. Lord. I need a motion to, but see, that's where I got confused. I need a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Jacob. Roll call, please.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Mercer.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson. Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Now, do I read my script? Okay. At this time, we will convene the public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposal to sell up to $7 million in working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to provide written or oral testimony regarding this matter. The purpose of the proposed issuance of these bonds is for work related to design and development costs related to the master facility plan, a BSA system which controls heating and cooling, and a portion of capital projects related to the facility's master plan. At this time, I will open the floor for comments for members of the Board of Education. So, are there currently any comments from the Board of Education members? There are none? Okay, now, Busher, you read your line.
Sorry, everyone, for eating, I was fasting. At this time, I will read into the record any written testimony received regarding the proposed issuance of the bonds. And there is none.
We will now open the floor for oral testimony or public comments concerning the proposed issuance of the bonds. If you wish to speak, please state your name for the record before making your statement. And I will remind you that your statement should be restricted to three minutes per our policy, and we're only accepting public comments on the bond right now. So, if you would like to make a comment, you can go up to the podium. If there are no further comments, I declare that all persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present their testimony. I now call for a motion to adjourn public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion made by Member Wolfinger, seconded by Member Nelson. That was Mari. Sorry. Who was it?
Me.
It didn't sound anything like you.
Okay. What was seconded by Member Jacob?
Roll call. Member Amawala? Yes. Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson.
It is, the public meeting is adjourned, well, the motion passes. The public meeting is adjourned. We will now proceed with the remainder of our agenda. Do we need to do a roll call again? Are we, we're back to normal now? No, we're going to do all that, but I don't have to do any more. Okay. Okay. Without further ado, it is my great honor to welcome the Middleton 3rd Grade Girl Scout Troop 47317 to read our land acknowledgement. Woo!
Hello, we are the 3rd Grade Brownie Troop 41317 from Middleton.
Today, we will share, today, we will share the Skokie School District 73 and 1/2 land acknowledgement. At School District 73 and 1/2, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of Ojibwe, Ottawa, Potawatomi, Ho-Chunk, Miami, Menominee, Sacan, Fox Nations, and Kikapoo Nation.
In District, in District 70, in District 73 and 1/2, we as students are taking steps to disrupt the erasure of Native American people, their histories, stories, and legacies.
To be sued so the land, learning from the original stewards of how to best be in the right relationship with the land, air, and water.
And to challenge our district leaders, teachers, and staff to create curriculum, instruction, and resources to honor this land and the legacies of Indigenous peoples.
Including families, including families in our own school district and their current contributions to our society.
Excellent job. You should all be very proud of yourselves. Well done. Now, if you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, moving on to public comment time. So, public comments may be made at the podium. You can raise the mic if you would like. Please remember to introduce yourself, and public comments may be restricted to three minutes or less, and we do time just to make sure that we are fair and equal in our approach.
So, I'm speaking on behalf of, of all of us, but it will not be 15 minutes. We are parents in this district and members of the Niles Township Caregivers of Special Ed 504 and Diverse Learners Group. Our group formed out of heartbreak and frustration, watching our children's needs be ignored or minimized by the same people we entrusted to keep them safe and supported. We stand here tonight with one purpose, to protect our most vulnerable learners, those who rely on special education and disability services. We are here to share some of our experiences and request changes, which will be outlined in more detail in a forthcoming letter and report we will submit to the public record. We've spoken with many families in this district about their experiences, trying to work with Student Services to get help for their children, and it is clear, there is a systemic pattern of abuse of power, mistreatment, dishonesty, and failure to deliver services. We want to emphasize that our frustration is not with our dedicated teachers and related professionals who work tirelessly to support our students. The problem lies in an administration that has concentrated oversight and decision-making in one individual, an individual who disregards parent voices and teacher expertise and whose decisions, we believe, have put our children's well-being at risk. This has created a climate where teachers often worry about speaking up, afraid of retaliation, while parents fear being dismissed or even penalized for fighting for their children's rights. Meanwhile, our kids, the ones who need the most care, are left languishing academically, socially, and emotionally. We've spoken with families who share alarming stories of intimidation, dishonesty, and a failure to deliver legally required services under Director of Student Services Angela Demay. Parents have been told, often after weeks or months, that critical services their children desperately needed were never implemented. Even more distressing, some have been pressured to remove these services from their children's IEPs or 504 plans as soon as they discover the district failed to provide them. In one recent example, a student's 504 plan was entirely forgotten when they transitioned from one district's school building to another. No one had been assigned to implement it, leaving that child's essential accommodations to simply slip through the cracks. We also learned that this spring's IEP and 504 meetings for students moving from one district school to another have suddenly been set to exclude key representatives from the receiving school unless a parent specifically requests their presence. This goes against the recommendation of experts like Equip for Equality and does our children a disservice. Parents who don't know the magic words risk losing the continuity and support their children require during a stressful academic transition. And then, there are the instances of Demay predetermining placements for students prior to IEP meetings. This is unacceptable and violates the law. Which brings us-
Thank you. If you want to continue, you just have to pass it over. Yeah, thank you.
My name's Sarah North, and I'm picking up on our group letter here. Which brings us to the larger effects for our entire community. This affects every taxpayer financially. The district's lawyer for these issues is at the beck and call of Angela Demay. That lawyer told us, told me specifically, that she reports to Demay and takes orders from her. But her, but that lawyer is paid for by you, the taxpayers. So, when she is called in to attend an IEP meeting for no good reason, simply to intimidate parents who complain to Demay about her conduct, you pay for that. When parents are forced to litigate her unreasonable denial of services, you pay for that. Despite all this taxpayer money spent to enforce her unreasonable decrees, if you look for the legal services in our budget expenditures, you won't be able to find them. It is hidden from view, lumped under generic-sounding entries. An even greater financial concern is that Demay's practices expose the district to the risk of individual discrimination suits and government investigation. Even if she were sued personally, for example, under civil rights statutes that apply, district taxpayers would be required by her contract to pay for her legal defense. Beyond the money, our district and community are not well-served by students who are not well-served. Our children, whose needs are not being met, cannot achieve the academic success and social inclusion they might otherwise. It harms both their present and their future. And parents who are regularly shut out of decision-making for our own kids become isolated and frustrated. This is not the community we deserve. As we work to complete our collective report, which details these issues and proposes solutions, we welcome additional information, experiences, and input from others. Please reach out to any of us you recognize or email us at 735 spedparents@gmail.com. In the meantime, we ask the Board and the interim superintendents to take immediate decisive action, restore transparency and oversight, end the use of threats or intimidation, ensure no family has to fight alone to protect their child's future. Thank you for listening. We remain hopeful that together, we can create a district that respects all learners, provides the support they need, and honors the trust that we place in our schools.
Just as a reminder, we don't respond to public comment, but I'll say thank you. So, thank you. Emily had a family emergency, which is why she stepped out, so I'm taking over the meeting. The next people, persons who would like to make public comment can go on ahead. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you. Sorry, I was fasting, so I'm eating right now. I'm so sorry. Next, we have correspondence. That's also me.
I, I mean, I, since you're-
Yeah, yeah, you know, yeah.
We, there is nothing in the Board except for a public comment from a community member about upholding, you know, our morality in the face of our current situation, so.
Thank you. And then FOIA request, next item F. Were there any FOIA requests, Maureen?
No.
Great, thank you. Next, we have staff recognition. Anyone else want to kick us off?
I'll start. I'm sorry, you go. Just kidding. I just wanted to say a shout-out specifically to Laura Williams. She's somebody who's been in the district for a really long time. She's someone, I believe, taught my sister, but also, I, I just feel especially, you know, in our current kind of national and political climate, it's really nice to know that there's somebody who is teaching my children about government, about history, who absolutely has a critical approach to it and thinks about things in a very logical, evidence-based way, and engages them in higher-order thinking about the world around them. I am constantly made more comfortable and safe knowing that she is a voice in their lives, so, thank you.
We traveled this past week so that our, so that our choir, 7th grade singers, 8th grade singers, horn and harmony, symphonic bands could compete. We got straight ones across the board, and I think that, that just shows what kind of work goes into our students and what they are producing, and they have that foundation, which is excellent, so.
I have a long list. I wanted to first say thank you to Sarah Shapiro, who invited me to come and read for her, for her kids, for her classroom, and that was lovely. It's always a challenge to kind of coordinate this, so it's always nice to see what's going on in the school. So, thank you for that, Ms. Shapiro. It's also nice to get to know some of the educators who are not the same educators necessarily when my kids were here. I wanted to also say thank you to our art teachers. We had a lot of kids that went to SOAR, and their artwork is displayed, so that's really cool. And Ms. Castellini, Ms. Beatrice, and Mr. Macbeth. And I wanted to thank everybody who has stepped in and helped through this very difficult transition. So many people to thank for stepping up and just doing the work that may not be yours, but we need it to continue to move on as a district. So, thank you to everybody, and I also want to give our president, Emily, a huge shout-out. I, I don't think anybody knows how much work she's doing, and she's really stepped in and stepped up and, you know, just, it, it's been a very difficult transition for everyone, but I'm proud to be part of this community that steps up and works together. So, thank you to everyone who stepped up.
I just want to say that despite the federal government's ignoring of it, it is Women's History Month, and I want to give a shout-out to all the women who work in this district who are amazing, and, and we recognize you, even if the federal government is trying to get rid of that. And I, you know, want to echo my, I, my son went through all the band stuff and the choir stuff, and it's amazing to see, in particular, Amy Kuiper's smiling face at 6:00 a.m., meeting the students who are going out to, to a clinic, and, and so, that's been pretty amazing. And then, finally, just thank you to the new interim superintendents who, it's, it's just been great working with you, and, and I think we all feel really like we're in good hands, so thank you very much for all your work.
That's great. Thank you all for the staff acknowledgements. Not to sound like a broken record, but when you go last, it's, it's all always said, but same thing, I'll start from the top and work our way bottom. Also, yes, major shout-out to Emily, who's been doing things beyond her scope of work as Board President to ensure that things aren't being fallen through the cracks when it comes to correspondence, getting responded to, mediating some loose ends, so I'm glad she's able to put her family first right now, and thanks for all that she's been doing. Similarly, with this Board, who's been really dedicated, we're very lucky to have two interims right now to man the ship, so thank you all as well, but also to all of the other admin, all of you right here who have stepped into other roles beyond the scope of what you do as well. We see you. Richard, we see you too back there, but, so thank you for honestly all that you've been doing outside of what your contractual agreements are with us, so thank you. And teachers, I mean, it's so cool to see so many of familiar faces who knew me from back in the day, or had, at least some of my friends, and I know we're Facebook friends, so we do have mutuals like that, but you all have kept this ship running in so many ways and have been that force of consistency for our students. So, beyond even the teachers, those who oversee extracurricular activities, sometimes driving by any of the schools around that time and how excited students are to have the wealth of programming that we have offered at that capacity, which is, again, work that you all are doing outside of your scope as teachers. So, thank you to everyone. Claps all- Okay, fine, no claps. No, but thank you. No, we, we needed that. And with that, we'll move on to information items. Information item number 5A, we have the superintendent's update. Do you all want to verbally do it, since I don't see to touch? Okay.
We're going to offer some, some comments on our first week here, and-
One week.
One week. And so, I just want to shout out to all the teachers who welcomed me into their classrooms over the last week. It was fun to visit classrooms or just see you in the hall, but it's fun to come to the classrooms, whether it's reading to a student in class or watching students put on costumes and act out plays in class, or being here on a Saturday when the drama teachers are here with parents building a set while the musical students are off at a competition. So, everybody's been very welcoming, and as I tell the students when I come to visit classes, when they say, one, who are you, and then, two, what are you doing here? I, I appreciate their protectiveness over the space. I simply say, you know, I'm here to do the same thing you're doing. I'm here to learn, so why don't you share with me what you're learning? And that's great, because they do, and, and that makes this all worthwhile. I do also want to thank our Student Services team and our Curriculum Team for their MTSS presentation last week at the Board Workshop. Very thorough, very enlightening, and very engaging, and it really made me think we, we do have to work to how to get this information out to the community in a digestible form so we can generate a dialogue around an important process like MTSS. A couple other things, you're going to see flyers over there, I believe, about the superintendent search, correct? So, please take one, share them, take the survey. If you haven't yet gone to the website to see about the focus group sessions, whether it's in-person or virtual, please sign up for those and bring your neighbors and friends. It's going to be the most important feedback that the Board gets in the process in selecting the next superintendent. And then, I do want to say one other shout-out and, two others, and notice, one is for Richard McDonald and Beck, but also for all the parents who are volunteering and showing up for the Community Engagement Session Team about facilities, facilities assessment, and what we're going to do with our facilities in the future. It's always open, the next meeting is March 31st, I think.
Yes.
Yes. Welcome to come, it's at Middleton at 6:00, and-
Nailed it.
Okay. And then, most importantly, on April 21st is a Community Engagement Session itself. You will hear more communications about it there. With the superintendent's search, it will be the most important opportunity for community members to give feedback on what they think is, should be our priorities for our facilities. And additionally, we really encourage you to not only bring a friend, but bring a neighbor who doesn't have students in the school. This could impact them down the road, and we have to hear from the whole community in order to get the right feedback of what, about what should happen next. So, please be on the lookout for that. My final shout-out is to America Torres as the Executive Assistant, bringing us on board, but also doing a lot of stuff nobody saw for recent months to keep things moving in a certain direction so we could get to this, and onboarding us with patience and a smile, and kind of ignoring our questions like, what? You know, like, she didn't ignore the question, but she ignored the way we asked the question and responded with a smile and helped us do a better job this last week. So, I just want to thank America, and I'll hand it off to Dr. Roberts.
So, I won't waste any of your time with just ditto everything Kane said, but I do want to do a few shout-outs. You do always, we'll have to rock, paper, scissors this next time. I absolutely want to echo Kane's sentiments around the staff and our families. You guys, this has been a joy and a pleasure, and if I could, if I could find the right words to just describe how, like, beyond amazing you all are, I mean, I'm proud to know you all. It's been just a lot of fun, too. You guys are fun people. I wish our little 3rd grade babies were still here to tell them what an amazing job they did, but since I did promise them that they would now be YouTube sensations for having done this, hopefully, they will see that it has been spoken into the microphone that they did such a beautiful job, such a beautiful job. And to our families that spoke, I just want to say, I know myself as a parent of a child with a disability, the level of vulnerability it takes for all of us to have honest conversations about how we're feeling and what we need, we just, we're really committed to continuing communication and appreciate everything you guys have, are doing and saying, and we, we look forward to partnering with YouTube. And then, I'll wrap it up and keep it moving.
Any questions from the Board for the superintendents?
I just want to say a quick thank you. Both of you stepped into this role, and you just took off like you've been here forever, so we appreciate it as a Board, I would say. Can I speak on behalf of the Board? I think so. So, thank you so much for just taking the reins and just working really hard.
You're welcome. You guys are a really easy group to love. You really are, so thank you, though.
Any other questions? When you all said a week, we all gasped. We were like, really? Okay.
I was going to say, it feels like a lot longer, and I, I guess what I would add on to Vicki is just like, you've done a lot, I know, from a Board perspective, to establish trust, and, since you came on, and I hope that that, it's the same feeling, I, I think it's kind of pervasive throughout the staff and the community, that we, we feel a trust from the way you've come in here.
Okay. There's no further questions or discussion. We're going to move on to item B with this, which is the Exclusionary Discipline Report. Just very high-level. This was posted on Board Docs. Now, I don't know what I'm allowed to say. Can I say what's on here, just the five things?
In the past, the superintendent has just read through, like I said, we had a suspension for this. Yeah, we don't have to. I mean, it's in the report.
I'll do that, and then I'll have a final editorializing at the end to top it off, but we did at Middleton have an in-school suspension for physical and verbal aggression for a day. Middleton in-school suspension, again, for physical aggression for a day. At McCracken, we had in-school suspensions, both for physical aggression and property damage for either 3/4 of a day or a day and a half. I, I recognize, and this is something we'll talk to the Board more about as we head into our final six weeks, the importance of recognizing when students are excluded from instruction, especially if it's disproportionate along historical lines. I think Keely and I were talking about, in order to help the Board get at this issue, we might look to quarterly give you a trend update. The, the challenge of doing a monthly update and a snapshot as you do it, and then you move on to the next one, we think a really productive way would, we'd notify the Board if appropriate by law, like we're supposed to, but then give a quarterly update so that you could see if things were going in the right direction or not in the right direction related to these behaviors and the suspensions, and what the administration and the staff are doing together about that trend. Sometimes the snapshots just end up being a bunch of snapshots, and we wake up six months later like, where are we with this? We think there might be a better, more effective way to do that, and so, we're going to look to do that before we head out.
We love that idea. I think just for the background and context, if you look at the second paragraph specifically that's on there with the background, that came out of a lot of conversations in policy specifically around how we report this discipline. In the past, it had been reported only out-of-school removals. We discussed this at length in policy and really decided that we felt that was hiding or kind of obscuring, not necessarily intentionally, but obscuring some of our discipline that was still very exclusionary. So, I, I love that, I love that you're building on that, because that's exactly the kind of mentality that we want going forward.
Yeah, I think we agree transparency is important if we're going to attack certain issues. We just want to make it in a productive way so that there's action tied to it at certain points that we can all discuss.
One thing that we also discussed in policy was having, and I think we had put it in there as an annual report, but I mean, quarterly is even better, that specifically looked at the discipline in regards to demographics.
Amazing, thank you. If there's no further questions or discussion on the Exclusionary Discipline Report, I'll move on to item C, which is the Administrator's Update. As a reminder, the Administrator's Update gets sent out via the Weekly. We have it linked on here, too. Are there any questions on the Administrator's Update from anyone today? Do you all want to say a sentence about it? Okay. It's there, it's there. Next, we have our Student Services Update. Same thing, it's on Board Docs for all of you to read. Is there any questions from the Board for Student Services? Like, you're fine. Good ringtone, nice mood music. All right? Great. If there's no questions or discussion, moving on. Curriculum and- Curriculum, instruction, and assessment, same thing, linked on here. Any questions or comments from the board?
I really encourage anybody who is interested in looking at kind of how our district stacks up against other districts, especially in the Little Nine, to really look at the information that's been put together by Kevin here, because it is extremely thorough, and really, I think, what could, A, it's extremely transparent, and also could allay some concerns. So I would really encourage, especially looking at page 27 of the 27-page report, but if you really enjoy reading every detail, it's pretty good.
Can I just add something? We put that in there, it had been previously sent to the board, but it was also in response to a letter from a group of parents seeking some answers, and I think we had just missed some pieces about, you know, sharing it out and getting it out. So what we're hoping is, we want to post it, and then if the board members have any questions next month, another, give you a month to delve into it, we can answer questions. It is posted, it is public. And then we also did send it to the individual parent who had sent the letter, just to follow up with them, and we called them because they had said they had not gotten it. So, but we would, as you said, encourage anybody to take a look at it and ask questions about it. And if you get it ahead of time, then we'll be able to actually talk about those questions and answers at the next board meeting.
I have a question. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for the great MTSS presentation. Not being an educator, it's a learning curve for me, so it's always really, really interesting for me to learn about what is done in the buildings. But I also was wondering, we've talked about this before, and I know it's been brought up for years. Do we, is there a way to get any data about how our kids do in high school, as far as like academically? Is there a way to get that? Because previously, we've been told by the district that they, by 2-19, that it was a challenge. But I'm just wondering if we can get kind of a global overview of how our kids do compared to other kids? Because if we're comparing schools, I think, I think, you know, it's important for people to understand really how our, how successful our kids are once they get to high school.
With all of my one week of experience here, let me try to take a stab at that one. I think it's an important question, right? So when we start to think about the kind of recommendations we'll make around reporting, whether it's discipline reporting, academic reporting, behavioral reporting, let me see if I can do a little looking into, if we can get some matriculation reports, right? I mean, part of this obviously practically depends on how they're coding and tracking a little bit, but it's definitely worth the question, and it's definitely worth us looking into and having some more conversations with the board around, what are the key data pieces you guys would like to track historically? As you know, there's a lot we could be looking at, so let's try to get on the same page around what are those key pieces we want to track, and how can we talk to the high school about backwards, backwards mapping that a little bit? So, more to come, I promise.
No, that's great. And then sometimes we also, it's helpful to see like what benchmarks are provided, even by 2-19, and what other feeder school districts are used to receiving, so hopefully there's a way to replicate that within the Little Nine, it'll make it easier, if that exists. But, agree, that's a great point, so thank you all. All right, no further questions or discussion. Item F, the facilities updates. Like I said, it's on here, it's linked, please definitely go to Board Docs, they're linked on here, and they're very, it's, I like how different everyone formats theirs, so this is very bullet-pointy. Any questions for Ed?
Do you just want to clarify the no rats update? No rats.
No rats, so, yeah, there's still, what the village told us and what our pest control person told us, we've checked it, the burrows haven't been touched, so we're going to probably, this weekend, or this week, we'll collapse them, and hope for the best. But no poison was ever put into the burrows.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Amazing. Moving on, item G, technology update. Any questions for Richard?
Would you like me to say something about community engagement?
Thank you.
Great. So as Kane mentioned earlier, we've been meeting with our community engagement team, a facility, facilitating team, which is comprised of parents. We also have some non-parents in that group, and teachers in that group. They have been meeting for the past couple of weeks to help us organize for community engagement sessions. We have two big all-come events that we're planning for this spring. The first one, which is going to be on April 21st, and this is going to be highlighting the state of all three buildings. We're going to have opportunities for educators to try to help you connect the state of facilities to the learning in the classroom. And then, again, as Kane said, we're going to be working with this group, this community-based group, to help develop some guiding principles for improving our schools. So we'll have that first session on the 21st, is going to be at Middleton, and it's going to run from 7 to 9 is what we have planned for right now. The campaign for this event was just finalized at our meeting yesterday. They're calling it Building 73.5, a plan to improve our schools. So you'll be seeing some campaign material coming out, probably close to April. We will have mailers, we're going to have flyers, we're going to be knocking on doors, and probably finding you at the farmer's market, or wherever we can, with the sole purpose of getting as many people into those spaces as we possibly can, because we really, really need all voices in that, especially, as Kane said, those who don't have kids in the system. So if you have neighbors that you know don't have kids in the system, make sure they know about it. But we'll probably beat you to it, so. That will start, the canvassing will probably start around mid-April, so it'll be a little while for that. But you'll start seeing some more communications coming out. We have a website we'll be dedicating to this, so we can have all that information in one place for our community to be able to access. So, that's all I got.
Great. Thank you, Richard. Any questions for Richard? Okay, amazing. Thank you, Richard, very thorough. Next, we're going to move on to item H, the financial update. This is all linked here for us to read. Any questions for Karen? All right, I learned from my teachers to wait five seconds. It is awkward, though. Glad there's no questions for Karen. Moving on to item I, which Richard just touched on. If there's any other questions on the district space needs portion. Reminder, March 21st. April 21st? Good thing we're doing reminders. Perfect. So April 21st. The big session, at Middleton, 7 to 9. Good. Amazing. Next, we have item J, future possible agenda items or discussion items that the board would like to surface right now? Oh yeah, go ahead, you can say.
Yes, we, there had originally been scheduled a board.
Can you speak just directly? There's a lot of people, millions have actually watched it.
There we go.
So if we could make sure we're speaking for them.
Whoa, whoa.
Millions, sometimes.
That, that triggers a bonus clause in my interim contract. I just want to point that out.
False.
False, yeah. So, there was on April 15th, scheduled a board workshop, like there had been last month, and I think the discussion was about canceling that and setting it as a regular meeting to address other items. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes. Realizing that we were going to need more meeting time on behalf of the superintendent search. That is what that is allocated for.
Okay. So, then what we'll do is, I think, just confirm that, because Emily will, you know, schedule that, and then if everybody could put it on their calendar, that'll be a regular board meeting. Although, much of it might be closed session, depending on where we are in the process, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so just so you know, it might not be a terribly public meeting, but you'll see that on the agenda. If you have questions, you can always just email us and find out. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we also do a calendar review at the end, but I guess I have to do that today, so we should write these down. All right, moving on to item 6A, we have the board equity committee update, which is also me. So, a couple of things, nothing too crazy going on on the equity front, but we do have our bingo night coming up in partnership with the PTO, which we're really excited about. We've intentionally done it, so it's the very last day of feedback for the superintendent search. So we, last year, we had over 200 people attend, which was awesome. It's at McCracken, Wednesday, April 2nd. Prizes are board games again, per usual. There's not enough prizes to go around, but in case any PTO members, teachers, or people in general would like to donate board games, those will be our prizes. And then those that do attend, there will be opportunity to like, take this five-question survey that we have administered throughout the district right now, to give your input for what you're looking for for our future superintendent. Which, plug for that survey right now as well. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have board policy committee.
So I'm completing my term this year, and one of my goals as policy chair has been to pull every single policy and make sure that they align. And that's what I did to these poor souls, is that we pulled all the policies that were just not aligned with our goals as a district. Some of them were outdated to, you know, back to 2011. The way it works is we get a packet from Illinois State Board of Education, and we review the policies that they give us, but sometimes we don't look at some of the policies that have been sitting there forever, and just didn't make any sense, and so we reviewed a bunch of policies. So you will see some of them. We aligned the language with what our goals are as a district. So thank you to the other board members from the policy committee for going down that rabbit hole with me.
Thank you. Vicky Flores, still yours, Ed Redd.
All right, I attend Ed Redd meeting on Friday. They're still pretty much working on the same ones that we've been working on for a couple of years. Cool things is that all of our initiatives that Ed Redd have been assigned to committee, so they're actually moving along, including polling places. And you might know, or you might not be familiar with it, but we're trying to remove polling locations from inside the schools for safety, because it doesn't make sense that we use, we have all of these safety priorities, and then a couple of times a year, we just let people walk in and out of a building. So, that's been one of our initiatives from our district, and now it's being taken up at Springfield. So, that's pretty cool. Let me see, what else have I done? One thing I do want to mention, I wasn't at the meeting last month, but I attended the Ed Redd Legislative Dinner, January 27th. I think it's important for all of us as a community to hear that, what is being kind of talked about at the legislative level, and some bits and pieces that could be a little bit reassuring. So, a lot of the stuff that we hear is chaos, right? And so, it's not a change in law necessarily. And so, I, it's important for us to stay connected and continue to do the work, and not get distracted by the chaos, and keep moving along together. And, so I want to reassure everybody that there are laws in place to protect special education, that's not going away. That will continue to be here. You know, we'll just have to deal with what we have to deal with when it gets here, but right now, nothing has changed, and the federal laws and the state laws are pretty much aligned. So, for now, we're okay. So that's an important thing for us to know as a community. I may not be at the next meeting, I am planning to go to Springfield again with Ed Redd for legislative days. One of the things that I know our governor has spoken about, that Ed Redd has taken up, is making cellphone, having a cellphone mandate. If anybody has any special feelings, or strong feelings about making laws about not having cellphones in the schools, please feel free to reach out. I will be there, and I can talk to Ed Redd about it. But that's where we are.
I have very strong feelings about it, Vicky, and I'm happy to talk to you about it later.
Me too. I'm happy to share my feelings, actually, I mean, as constituents, you should know. I don't agree with mandates from Springfield coming down to the district. I think we can handle it as a district. I think our teachers, we need to empower our teachers versus making laws that now are just going to criminalize our kids even more. I think the teachers and the staff are amazing enough, and they have a hold on their classrooms, and they know exactly what they're doing, and we can trust them with making the right decision for each individual classroom. If you have any feedback on that, I'm around.
That was my feedback.
Amazing. Thank you for the Ed Redd update. We were really feeding off the energy, we usually don't talk this much. I'm kidding. Okay, sorry.
Do you want me to just read the PTO update, because it's in there? Or?
NTDSC. That's okay. Latasha?
We're on an off-month, so we didn't have one, so.
Amazing. All right, item E, we have the PTO update. Yeah, these are bullet points, I can read them.
Go ahead.
So, the PTO is providing funding for a new communication corps board for the Meyer Playground. The PTO is also funding new recess equipment for Middleton. The PTO is also funding an event slash performance for McCracken students. Who funds the PTO? A lot. Good job, we're so happy. The PTO will be supporting the upcoming bingo night with volunteer and 10 board game prizes. Nice. And then, the PTO will be hosting the annual District Taste of 73 and 1/2 on April 6th. Really excited about that. And the PTO will be fundraising for district staff appreciation in the week of May. Thank you, PTO, and thank you, Margaret, for this update. Any questions for the board? Amazing, moving along. Finance committee. So, the finance committee, we met like two weeks ago at this point. It was myself, Emily, Latasha, we had both, we had Karen there, we had Kane there, and we had our, our community rep. We talked about a lot of different things that may or may not be relevant for an audience of this size and scale today, but we were looking in things such as the village has a green initiative to encourage people to walk more, for example. We talked about that, if that was something we'd be interested in pushing in some way, how that would impact bus routes. We talked about our service vendors, how that impacts, again, buses, but also food service providers or cleaning services, et cetera. Then finally, we talked about student fees for the upcoming school year, and all of this is in the minutes that is, can be found on Board Docs. Any questions from the board? Okay. Item G, the governance committee. So the governance committee makes up of myself, Emily, and Kelly, board president, vice president, and secretary, and we are in charge of the superintendent evaluation process. I don't know if we're evaluating you guys, to be honest. But we don't have a.
I, I vote no.
I don't know what we'll do with it, but, but for the sake of transparency, there is not a governance committee meeting scheduled anytime soon. If there is, you'll hear about it here. Any questions from the board? Okay, great. Next, old business, we have item 7A. I need a roll call and a motion to approve these policies for adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve policies for adoption.
Second.
Motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Mercer. Can I get a roll call? Sorry, it was lagging. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller? Member Kelly Nelson? Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you. Great. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have item 8, we have new business. We can still ask questions about some of these things, right? As each, okay, okay, cool, cool. Not that I have the questions, but was making sure. We have item 8A, to approve the geotechnical engineering services contract. Can I get a motion for that first?
I'll make a motion to approve the geotechnical engineering services contract.
Second.
Motion moved by member Jacob, seconded by member Mercer. Member Amawala? Are we voting on this? Oh, does someone have questions on this first? Any thoughts or questions? So the background is that we approved this award for geotechnical engineering services for the work that's happening at Middleton and McCracken. We had an RFP, people bid for him, we're going with, looks like the lowest bidder by quite a lot. Any questions?
No.
Now we can do the roll call, sorry. Thank you. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller? Member Kelly Nelson? Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Sorry, this is the first board meeting I've ever let.
You're doing great.
So they have good attendance.
Fantastic.
Thanks, thanks, yeah, okay, thanks, guys. All right, so next, we have item 8B, which is approving an MOU for holidays for our PS. All right, so next we have item 8B, which is approving an MOU for holidays for our PSRO employees that are employed less than a 12-month basis. Are there any questions or discussion on this item?
No.
There are no questions or discussion, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the MOU for holidays for PSRO employees, employed on less than a 12-month basis.
Motion moved by member Latasha Nelson, seconded by member Mercer. Roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Great, motion passes. Next, we have item 8C, which is to approve a memorandum of understanding for Fall 2025 Working Group. Are there any questions or discussion on this? Great, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a MOU for Fall 2025 Working Group.
Second, I'm the second guy.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for, not, I'm not making the motion, sorry. Should I say who did it? Oh, yes. Sorry, yeah, a motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Mercer. Roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Sorry, America, I'm causing chaos. All right, item 8D, I'm, we approve the resolution for the appointment of IMRF agent for Karen Hayes. Any questions from anyone on this? Great, I need a motion.
I move that we, I move that we approve the destruction of the closed meeting audio.
Not that one, the other one, D. We're not destroying it yet.
I'm sorry. I move that we approve a resolution for the appointment of IRF, IMRF agent for Karen Hayes.
Motion moved by member Latasha Nelson, seconded by member Mercer. Roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Amazing, item E is to approve the destruction of closed meeting audio recordings as stated on the memo. Any questions or comments about this? Great, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to just, oh gosh, hold. Approve the, I approve, make a motion to approve the destruction of closed meeting audio recordings as stated on the memo.
That was a close one, motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Latasha Nelson. Roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Amazing, motion passes. Next, we have item F, which is to approve the bi-annual review of closed meeting minutes. Any questions or discussion on this? Amazing, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bi-annual review of closed meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Latasha Nelson. Roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Great, motion passes, thank you. Next, we have item G, which is just a policy for first read and review, this is just an information item, we're not voting on any of this, if you have any questions, now would be a good time to bring them up, otherwise take a read and we still have time to ask questions before it's approved in the next meeting. Did I miss anything on that? Good, great. Now we have item H, the consent agenda, reminder, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Latasha Nelson. Roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Great, the consent agenda passes. Item 10A, public comment. If anyone would like to make public, public comment, now is your chance, you have three minutes, we clearly set timers, just please introduce yourself to the microphone. Great. And then finally, we have calendar review, so we have the B-PAC meeting, that's tomorrow, we have spring break coming up, we have an e-learning day, April 1st, April Fools', just kidding, it is that day.
I, I just.
Why'd they do that?
It was, because it's the election day, I don't think you, but I mean, just, I want to say it again because I know parents, there's going to be somebody that texts me like two days before going, did you know we have an e-learning day? April 1st, parents, we're listening, you have an e-learning day, tell your friends. That is because we have made it the policy of not having students in the building when we have elections going on in the building for the exact reasons that member Wolfinger brought up.
And then finally, we have a reorganization meeting, which essentially is after the election, we have new board members that sit in the audience, then we like vote them in and we have cake, TBD on when that is. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
What? Because, Kate? A motion made by member Jacob, seconded by member Latasha Nelson. All right, roll call, member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?